Mayor, it looks like your back's been a little bit better, huh?
Yeah, it's been better. Any troubles for about a month? I've played some, I haven't played a lot, but.
Making me jealous. I mentioned to get out, back up there.
I've played, I haven't played a lot. Played a couple of weeks ago and I've played since. Well, I shouldn't say I did play nine holes Sunday, forgot about it. Well, I think it's 5:30. Want to welcome and appreciate those of you that are here with us. I'll call the meeting to order. And I lost Christina.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parliament, Mayor Innes.
Here. We have several items on the agenda. First of all, we would need to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have a couple of public people. Just, this would be the time, if anyone wants to say anything, they can. Okay. First action, or first item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance number 637, Medical Cannabis. First of all, I want to, I want to thank you, Lisa, for all the work that you've put in on this. It's been, you know, a real challenge, I think, with all of the changes and the lack of maybe, I don't know, the state seems to me like they've been a little less diligent in getting information out. And maybe they don't necessarily always know, but we do appreciate all the time that you've put into this. And I think we have, from what I see here, a good plan. And I guess at this point, are there questions or comments from any of the council members?
I would just ask maybe for updates as, as we have interest, so that we can kind of keep a finger on the pulse in case we need to make any tweaks. For applications.
Yeah, I think that'll be very interesting, Dana. You know, I, I feel like we've, you know, we're looking at a, you know, what bothers me a little bit is, you know, the state has, the voters voted. They, they passed this. And it's our job to carry out the wishes of the people that live in our communities. And I think we've put together a fair policy. And, you know, I, I really believe that, you know, we're on the right track. I'm, I'm sure there are going to be tweaks, but I do believe we're on the right track.
I have a question. So, it's a thousand feet, was it from foundation to foundation, or is it from, from the schools? I think I'm looking at the right stuff. Or is it from the building? It just says a thousand feet of public or private school meets, so it's not the...
Not property line, it's the foundation.
Foundation.
Right. So, it's not defined by statute, just says a thousand feet. So, at the last meeting, the input that I received was, you would rather do, I think, from building to building. So, I did from building to building.
Yeah. And that was still going to cover playgrounds and all that anyway, so, even if they're out there ways.
So, it, it seems to me that we've made it, like the mayor said, fair. We're not being as stringent as some communities. And I'm, I guess I'm okay with that, just like he said, the voters voted.
Only thing I am concerned is, I know it's up to us to do locally what we've, you know, feel is best for the community. I, I just have a problem with the thousand feet from foundation of a school to another one. We know a lot of school activities take place outside of the school. Sporting events, band, what, whatnot. So, that's my only hangup with this is, I know it was not really written clearly, but I feel like we're also kind of, I don't know.
What are you, well, what are you proposing that would be better?
I, I just feel like the school property, a thousand feet from the school property, that's just how I feel.
Brian did look at it last time and provided a map, and I, and Brian, you can clarify, but I think we were, it was maybe sixty-five feet that might have expanded it if we would have defined it differently. So, it didn't really exclude very many areas if we did the building to building instead of property line to property line.
Yeah, the ones that stand out in my mind, from the southeast corner of the high school, if you went from the building, it would be on the west side of the Alliance Building. If you went from the property line, it would be over to the post, the post, the east side of the Post Office Building. And then, the other one that, a couple more, the north side of the high school would extend from the middle of Sunshine if it was from property, or from the building, and it would be up to, I think, the Catholic Church property if it was the property line. BE, it would extend it from Blaine's to Kairosport.
I did have a question, and I think I'm clear. A gentleman wrote a note to us about preschool. They have a preschool out in the area west on Holly. Is that area, I mean, is it, it's a thousand feet from a preschool though also, is it not?
That's the way the ordinance is written.
Yep, that's, it's written.
The state statute gave it that.
Correct.
What about preschool?
It's not mentioned in the state statute or rules.
Then to answer your question, Barb, I, I think we're being less, less conservative than other cities, except for maybe the license fee. I received some information in terms of license fees. We're proposing the ten thousand. Other than Sioux Falls, Mole Bridge is looking at twenty thousand. You know, Sioux Falls is looking at that hundred thousand every two years, so fifty thousand. Areas around us are really looking at more like five thousand. So, Del Rapids, I think, is looking at four thousand, but that's based on their population, you know, one per person. Other people are just sending, are setting it just flat, five thousand. So, we might...
I think at least we have a basis for it. I mean, not just pulling some number out of the air.
No, I think we're fair with the amount. I, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't challenge that at all. I think we're up to three is still being diligent, that we're not over saturating a situation that we may or may not be comfortable with. And that's the difficult part of this whole situation is, we all have questions whether or not, you know, is this right for our community? Again, that's not necessarily our question to answer. The voters answered that question. And what we're trying to do is put together a plan that, that serves, you know, all parts of our community.
I did have one question. I'm trying to find my question. Oh, I'm sorry. I did have one question on the, on the suspension and the revocation of license. And quite frankly, Lisa, I can't find my question, do you?
I have it if you want.
Yeah, go for it.
So, Jack had asked me whether or not, under the proposed suspension or revocation, we would potentially take away or suspend a license if there was a theft or failure to prevent, a theft essentially, under, gee, I think it's under F, I'm looking for it. So, under section seventeen, three, ten, F, Failure to Prevent Diversion or Theft of Medical Cannabis, that's one of the things that we have in our proposed ordinances, which quite frankly, most entities have something like that. He had asked, is that something we do with liquor licenses? Liquor licenses, there's a lot more out there in terms of the statutes for revocation and suspension of licenses and regulations. But I think the idea behind that section is that if the entity failed in some of its security measures, if they were negligent or intentionally doing something that caused somebody to be able to improperly steal, rob, whatever, the establishment, that that would be a reason that we could take away the license. Now, we have a process in place so that it would initially be reviewed by your city administrator, then we'd have the appeal panel, and then ultimately to the city council. So, it's not just like if somebody broke into one of the establishments, stole, that their license is revoked. But it's, we, we have a number of different reasons why their license might be suspended or revoked. And I think sometimes it's better to give more notice than less notice of here's reasons why, so make sure you get your, your security measures in place, for example.
Yeah, I guess my concern was a little bit in the wording, Lisa, that it seemed open, let's just say, to the possibility of quite literally one robbery could get their license revoked. And that seemed a little bit more, come to someone on that, on that business than it would like a, like a liquor store. I guess that was my concern, Lisa.
And it doesn't say if you're robbed, that that's why. It says Failure to Prevent Diversion or Theft. So, you know, if you don't have security measures in place, diversion, sometimes we think of as an employee diverting something. So, you don't have measures in place so your employee doesn't steal the cannabis while they're working, that could be a reason for revocation or suspension. So, it's not saying if you're, if there's diversion or theft, your license can be revoked. It says Failure to Prevent. So, I think that's a different standard than just if you're robbed or somebody steals. You should have prevented, and there should have been a basis for it, for the prevention.
Chief, you're shaking your head. How would, how would it be treated with an alcohol deal?
With an alcohol?
Yeah.
Well...
Liquor store.
Hey, it's not the same thing, but I, I mean, I, I understand what she's trying to say, and I agree with what she's trying to say. She's not talking about, you know, smashing perhaps, or robbery, or burglary, or something like that, where you have your normal security measures, your cameras, everything's in place, everything's functioning, but that happens. You know, I think she's referring to more products going out the back door. You're not keeping proper records like they have to in statute, and employees are taking the whole of them, or things like that is what she's referring to. So, I think the wording alludes to that, I guess, and doesn't, isn't referring to the other aspects, Lisa, that...
Okay. I was, I was just wanting to make sure that you were comfortable with it too.
I was listening to her explain it, and I was nodding my head because I agree with what she, you know, what she was saying, and it made sense to me.
Okay, sounds good. Good for me.
Amy, I'm, I'm curious. I mean, obviously, I think some of the challenges that we're going to see with this particular area are going to impact your department the most. Are you comfortable with what we're...
Yeah, I am. I'm given, you know, what's out there and the direction that the city has to take as far as the statute goes, and, you know, that there's some things that you can't forgive people who come, and you can't let people come, and quite frankly, the citizens voted for it. So, you know, on our end, it's laws change all the time, so we have to adapt and, and change with them. And so, it's just another thing. We'll see how, how it goes and what happens when the first ones come to town. You know, it's all going to change again when recreational comes through. So, you know, we just, we try and stay adaptable, and then, you know, stay ahead as long as we can, and adjustments then come up. So, I'm comfortable with what Lisa prepared. I think it's another job of trying to be open to it, yet trying to safeguard the town and the business and the city itself, so, yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you.
And I would say that the police chief has looked at this several different versions and provided input, and we've incorporated his input. Couple of things that we have in our ordinances is that he would be on that appeal panel if there's a suspension or revocation, for example, that he, along with the building code inspector, before we issue a certificate of occupancy, he would go in and make sure the security measures that are statutorily required, and maybe required in our ordinances, that they actually got those in place. So, our police would be involved in making sure that we're providing a safe place to maybe alleviate some of those concerns.
What about the preschool situation? I, I am a little sensitive to the fact that you possibly could have a establishment fairly close to a preschool. Is that a concern of the council?
Is that, I don't disagree with that, but is that something when you go through fighting and stalling that take into consideration at the place where it's located?
That's true.
Do we not have, we don't have anything in regards to churches in this, right? We took that out. Because like, normally with liquor, we said three hundred feet, and most of our preschools are attached to a church. I guess there is one, Honeybee's not, in building blocks, I guess, but...
Common sense wise, I don't think, I don't think preschool students are going to even know what it is. They can't, they can't read.
Well, we, we do have in our proposals that it's going to be a thousand feet from any public or private school, including a preschool, elementary, intermediate, middle or high school. So, preschools are in there, churches aren't, other uses aren't.
I saw the preschool in there, that's why I asked the question.
Right. So, that's seventeen, four, one, A. Because the statute just says school, so we've defined to us what school means, and we've said preschool, elementary. Seventeen dash four dash one, A.
I was thinking we had put it in there.
Seven, four, one, A.
So, it, okay. So, even if it doesn't appeal to churches, the church automatically would be a part of that because of the preschool within it?
If they have a preschool, yeah.
Okay. Is that, is that going to change the map considerably?
Yeah.
And the state, yeah, the state ordinance just talks about, doesn't say K-12 or...
It just says school, so...
When it's not defined, and since we have the ability to regulate, we, the way it's drafted is preschool. That's up to you if you want preschool or not, but that's the way it's in the first reading.
Yeah, I thought preschool was in there, that's why I asked the question.
I don't feel that the preschool needs to be in there personally.
I would agree.
I would also agree. If you haven't looked at the map, you could see that potential.
Yeah, just looking at the preschool that's out by Sioux Valley. The thousand feet would be about five hundred feet west of the funeral. So, that Encore Park, if you remember their preliminary plan, they've got three commercial properties along Holly, that most eastern lot would be out. It would be within that thousand feet. Yeah, preschool, if we go to preschool, and then you're going to, that's borderline on daycare too. You know, how many, how many places call themselves a daycare slash preschool? And I think we're, I think we're going a little too far. I mean, I also think of not just liquor stores, but a vaping store. I mean, like you said, little kids can't read, but is it any different, you know, having a vape store in a location that's that, that close to a, the school slash preschool? So, yeah, I, I think we stick to the schools and leave the preschools out.
So, I think that's four people saying, take out the preschool. So, I'll take that out for our, if you make a motion to pass this, we could say with the modification of that, and then it's in our first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading with the omission of preschool under seventeen, four, one.
We need to take out private school or just preschool?
Private school's in the statute.
Private school's in the statute.
Right. We don't have any, but...
I would say that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance number six thirty-seven, Medical Cannabis. Is there any other questions or discussion?
I have another comment. I mean, when it comes to signage, it says cannabis establishes may, no exterior signage shall use the word marijuana, cannabis, or any other phrase or symbol commonly understood or refer to cannabis. So, really, these buildings are going to exist, and nobody's going to know what they do. So, even seventeen, four, seven, signage and advertising. So, even if the preschoolers could read, they wouldn't even know what they were doing in there. But yeah, we can put up a liquor store and throw up a Bush Light ad, so...
Yeah, that's, I, I saw that too, Tim, but that's kind of like, well, do we, do we restrict a liquor store from putting up, you know, a big bottle of vodka on their building, or, or, as I mentioned, a vaping store?
What would they, what would they put up there then? I mean, I, I didn't catch that, Tim, thank you.
You know, they got to be able to advertise their business, but, you know, after all, it is a business that they're going to be, you know, doing at this location.
I, I'm trying to find it, but my recollection is, that's by state law, and the only thing that we added was to not have the cannabis marijuana leaf. So, I'm trying to find it right now because I don't have the searchable one, but I think the, that's by state law that you can't put those words on a sign.
Also, I mean, I'm kind of being devil's, I'm being a devil's advocate here, because I, just down south, and you have to use the back door to use a liquor store. That's how taboo it is, right? You just don't go in a liquor store. There's no signage, there's nothing. And I feel like, I know to many of you, it might be like, what? That's ridiculous. But it's a baby step, right? It's, it was an illegal drug, now it's legal, so they're just put that on there, and this probably will change, right? I mean, give it a year, give it a couple of years, I don't know, but I just feel like when the first liquor stores came out, it probably was the same way. They didn't probably let them do what they let them do now. I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of why they would have put that in there, and that's what I can think of.
I think they were just afraid of having somebody say, marijuana sold here.
Maybe, I don't think...
I don't know. But are, are there any options, Lisa?
I'm trying to find the regulation right now. I think it's under ninety-ten, I'm just pulling it up. Give me a second.
So, you just call it Jax, I guess? I don't know. What do you do?
Do you think they did this too, Lisa? Because I know it's medical now, and it, and do you think they did it in prep for recreational, like with the, from the state? That they didn't want that to say? Because, I mean, to me, if it's for medical, you can say medical marijuana or whatever, but maybe they just, I don't, I mean, I don't know why they're saying no against it for medical, if they're just thinking ahead of, thinking if it's for rec.
You don't think they're thinking that high?
I'm sure there will be...
I think they're anticipating completely different regulations for recreational.
I'm sure we'll see a lot of changes even in the first month, six weeks, so...
It's a lot more sense to label what it is than that. People blindly walk in to some random store, thinking they're going to take home some rolls for supper.
I think by the time these things get established, you'll see some changes with that.
Only my own problem with that is, once something gets in an ordinance or a law, it's a lot harder to get it out of there.
I just think this is going to be very flexible, Jack, over the next sixty days. I really do.
Well, there's nothing saying that if we pass this ordinance that we can't readdress it.
Well, this is the first reading, yeah.
You know, later, even after the second reading.
It may change by the time we get to...
It just takes the first reading, it's like a reading, it doesn't mean it, it just takes a couple of months to change.
Right. But I mean, nothing saying that we can't change it in the future.
Okay. For the second reading, would this be small enough that we wouldn't have to go back to a first reading again if we make a tweak to it at the next meeting?
I think something like that, if you're...
Okay, we've had a motion and a second to approve the first reading. Are there any other discussion points? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is reconsideration of contract with ISG for golf course retaining wall.
Well, I brought this up, and I was, I was the lone nae boat. But I feel that when we put it out to one design firm, any of these projects, to one design firm, we get bound by what they propose. So, it's a, in this case, ISG says seventy thousand to design a retaining wall. Personally, that sounded like a lot of money was one, one reason, but I'm more upset that we approved that, because yes, we need to move it forward. We want to move the project forward. But when we put, when we give contract to, without reviewing any other design quotes, not just designs, design quotes, we're limiting ourselves. So, we approve, we did approve ISG. They'll come back with a design and take it all the way out to bid. Once it's out to bid, we'll take the lowest bidder, and of course, then we'll have to have a construction administration contract, and the design firm is basically a lock to, to do that. So, they come in, which, which happened a couple of times this summer, they'll come in and say, we'll do it for fifty thousand. Just throwing numbers out there. And of course, we approve that, and then, two, if not three times this summer, design firms came back to us and said, we need a little extra money to complete the contract. Now, we've just written another open check to them again, because we got to have the project done. So, to me, for this and for future projects, we should at least have two, if not three, proposals from these design firms. And quite frankly, it's not that, in this case, it's not that big of a project that, and there's, that we still couldn't get the, a new design, well, a new contract, I should say, where the design firm completed well in advance of needing to get it out to, to a bid. So, for instance, I believe we were going to put this out to bid in January or February, Brian, is that right?
Yes, target.
I can't believe there isn't a half a dozen design firms that couldn't get us the quote on what they would charge us for just the, the design. They're not, I'm not even talking about the, the project, the whole project. They couldn't get us a quote within a couple of months, easy. There's many firms that are already familiar, excuse me, familiar with the project. So, I would, my, my thought is, we go back and have Tammy put it out to a couple, three other companies.
Just a little bit of background. Tammy thought there was only two local companies that could do this project, just because of the scope of it, and that was HDR and ISG. She received, what do you call it? Qualification, qualifications from those two. And then we sat down with a, with four staff members and decided on ISG. Typically, that's what you do, is you do qualifications, not bids or quotes from two different engineering firms. That was Tammy's process on this.
What's qualifications mean, like prior experience?
Prior experience.
Well, quite frankly, it's a simple retaining wall. It's not that big of a project. And I could rattle off three or four other contractors or design firms that, in my opinion, would be more than qualified to do it. And the ones that we're familiar with. CDI out of Brookings, they've done retaining walls, many, many of them. DGR, it's not that big of a project.
So, Jack, I hear what you're saying, and I agree that I would like to see more options, and I know we don't get into the weeds on that, and I appreciate that. We had two, and that four of the staff looked at that. I appreciate that, because you folks know more than I certainly do. But I really don't want to start over on this, and so, I'm going to hold firm on my position that we just move forward. But I appreciate your concern and your thoughts, and I know you know this stuff, so...
My read would be, Jack, on this, and I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I think, I come from a business world where any project, you would get multiple bids on the project, not necessarily on the architectural firm, or in, you know, the planning firm. We, we sometime, we use pretty much the same ones. I do believe in this particular case, we've already signed this contract. I would hate to be one that went back on something we'd already signed. I think, I think for future, this is a good recommendation, but I do believe that, that this particular, you know, after looking at, through it, contract was signed on August eleventh by both parties, and that's where I'd be at.
I guess if we've already signed it, it probably is a moot point then, but I do agree that we should, we should be looking. I mean, we have a obligation to the taxpayers. We look at almost everything else. I mean, multiple bids for the air conditioner at the golf course and anything else we do, we, we get, we get bids, so I would like to see that moving forward, too.
Always have a, not always, most contracts in this, and we do a termination provision. I, I don't know if they've already started work, and if they've already started work, we'd have to pay them for it, for what they've done to date. I don't know where they are with that, but there is a termination provision if we want to terminate a contract. I try and put that, make sure that's in there, and we do have that in here, but I just don't know if they've done work.
What's that consequence? I mean.
Um, the consequence, i-if, there's termination provisions for cause, I mean, or for just because we want to terminate it. But if they've already started the work, then we, if we're just gonna terminate it because we don't want to use them or we don't want to do the project anymore, then they can bill us for whatever they've done to date. I just don't know how far they are into this project. They maybe already are ten, fifteen thousand dollars into the project. I have no idea.
I'm not sure on that either, and I did look at that termination clause. Now, I've read it a little bit different. Written notice in event of substantial failure by the other party perform in accordance. Now, I, I would question whether or not there's been any failure on their part in.
Um, section B, termination convenience. The owner may turn beneath agreement for the convenience, so.
That means that?
I, I would think that that means that, but then again, we still have to payments upon termination right after that. So if we terminate it, they've incurred anything.
Well, let's just talk future then, for the heck of it. So we get another similar small project like this, and what would change? I mean, right now, Christina, you said Tammy got qualifications, whatever, from two companies, and you guys decided on one?
Those are conversations we're gonna have to have with Tammy when she gets back and, and really get her viewpoint on all of this because she really heads all of the engineering contracts and starts those processes and does the negotiations.
Let me ask you, Christina, one of the things that I was looking at, and maybe I'm not, I'm certainly not intellectually, you know, should maybe make this statement, but don't they somewhat follow standard rates on their engineering work? Is that, because that was included in this. Is there not a standard of, of rates that they're charging us?
Well, and I can answer that they have a listing of what they're gonna charge by the hour, but then they estimate how many hours it's gonna take, and then the, the rates are in there in the event they're gonna charge extra. You use those for the extras.
Sure.
But I think they're, what they're doing is trying to say, this person's rate, that person's gonna have to do this much, and this person's gonna have to do this much, and that's where they come up with the estimate. So there's, there might be a standard rate, but it doesn't necessarily, and it, there's no required rate. Anybody can charge anything.
Okay.
But it's kind of hard to decide which level engineer, which level of surveyor did what to, so the rates are in there, but I don't know that they're that helpful to see that one person charges three hundred and fifty dollars and another person charges three hundred and twenty-five dollars because it really doesn't make that much of a difference in the end.
Obviously, we've had good success with the company that we are using. Correct?
Correct. What other projects have they done?
With this company?
Yeah.
Uh, they did the city hall, um, and the public works sort of study or space needs study. There you go.
They also did a project down past the wall. Did more days than once, if it's in the territory.
I'm not sure on that. Space needs study is the one I can think of right now.
I think Jack makes a good point, and I think duly noted that we should look, probably do some planning with Tammy because it would be in her area, and without her here, I guess I wouldn't, would say that would, I'd need to hear what she had to say. But I think at this point, to me, this, you know, I, I didn't, I looked back at the contract. We did sign it on August, it was dated August eleventh and signed on the sixteenth, so.
This was just a design, is that, I'm sorry, it wasn't the last meeting. This was just for a design, right?
Design and bid and so.
Do you think they ever take advantage of us because we are a city? I just feel like it's a lot of money, and I don't know in the private sector, somebody would just lay over and let them charge that. I mean, because that seems like a lot of money, right? Or is that pretty typical?
It, Tammy, I do know Tammy is, uh, she looks at the cost, she's, I know she's negotiated with a few other projects trying to get their dollars down, so she does, you know, look at that and she does evaluate that pretty closely.
But you know what I'm saying, though? I just feel like sometimes they think, oh, government, let's, you know, get money. It's sometimes.
The problem when, when there's not a competitive bid is that they feel they have an it. And if they know they have, they're competing against two, three, or however many more companies, why not just do a RFQ or RFP, whatever you wanna call it, to all the available contract, or design firms and get a competitive quote? We do that for large projects, why wouldn't we do it for small ones, too? Now, I don't want to micromanage what, what she's doing, but it's not that difficult just to put out a, if she's gonna put it out for one, why not put it out for four? My thoughts.
Any other questions on, on the item? I think my read on this is that we feel we've made the decision at this point, and we're gonna go forward with it unless there's a question that someone else might have. Okay, then the last item on the agenda is our 2022 budget work session.
Would you like to say?
You certainly are welcome, but no.
You don't have to put your key in the mystery.
No, we're good.
I'm going to schoolwork.
The rates aren't as high as engineers, but I will. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you. Okay, before, budget work session, you know, I, I have to admit, this is a much different process here than what I'm used to. I've typically met with the month, you know, when I was CEO at Furniture Mart, I was in charge of budgets, and I would meet with the different department heads and go through, you know, what they were requesting. I asked them usually to give me, you know, what do you want and what do you have to have? And, you know, at that point, I think it became, you know, their responsibility to tell me that I really need to have this in order to do the work that I'm assigned to do. If you want me to do more, then I have to get into the want section of things. And I felt like a little bit last time we got into, especially on the engineering side of things, that we want to do maybe more than we're capable of doing, and I think we have to be careful. We can't just give people to each department based upon all the projects that we have. It's up to them to decide, these are the ones we have to do. And I think that's what we're sort of looking at in the, in, in the finance area, in the engineering area, and in, in all areas, we have to make sure that we take care of what we have to do and then what we'd like to do and want to do. You know, those are things that we look at going down, down the road. I just felt very uncomfortable after the last meeting in the discussions. I felt very frankly that we were sort of pitting the different departments against each other, and I don't think that's what any of us are intending to do, but I felt a little bit personally that that was what was happening, and I, I just, I needed to at least say that, and I just want us to be a little careful. Now, the other part that was somewhat contentious, I don't know if contentious is the right word, but questioning was, was the raise. And so I don't have the background on the raises, compensation that was used in the past. My understanding was that there was a standard, um, consumer index that was used, and this year it's a little bit different. Somewhere in the middle is probably where we're gonna have to, to get to, so I think we need to listen, but, uh, wanted to at least say that before we start. Now, having said that, I think where we're at, Brian, is mainly on the wage side of things. Is that correct?
Probably, no. Probably be the first place to start. Um, I went back and looked at wages and benefits as a percentage of total compensation. Went back to 2020, since that's the year that we have actual figures for, and then I looked at proposed 2022 numbers, compared them to BLS standards as far as government and local government and state government, where percentage-wise, our, our benefits and wages are comparable. They're sitting at sixty-three point two percent total wa, or, uh, benefits of thirty-six point eight percent of total compensation, wages is sixty-three point two, BLS is sixty-one point nine and thirty-eight point one respectively. Now, that's the government side. Private sector side, it's, it's very different. It's seventy percent to thirty percent. So and that was, that was in actual paid out. I did look at accrued, uh, sick leave and vacation time as well. That's on that second spreadsheet. We don't pay out, that's, I guess that was the first spreadsheet. Second spreadsheet is the actual, what we actually paid in sick leave because not everybody gets sick and uses all of their sick leave, nor do they all use their vacation leave. So we're fairly comparable to the local government. We're not comparable to the private sector, and there is a technical note that I noted in my memo from the Bureau of Labor Statistics that says you're not supposed, you shouldn't compare private sector and government to each other. There's vastly different, um, difference between these sectors stem from factors such as variation in work activities and occupational structures. So looking at the data, we're right where we should be as far as governmental work.
So Brian, I know from doing these every year, like, like Jim was saying, um, for years, the annual CPIU was averaged around three percent. And then, uh, then it started going down a couple of years ago, I believe it was down to, you know, one point five range, give or take. Um, which was historically low, um, let's say over the last ten, fifteen, twenty years even. I mean, if you, if you eliminate the last three or four years, that trend line was a pretty steady, give or take three percent. Then it jumped up to, or ju, or dropped down to one and a half, and now it's dropped, or went back up to five something.
Five point four, I think, is what is put in the budget.
So I know what we always looked at at my company was, we'll do, we'll do the CP, CPIU up to three percent every year.
Yeah, and I just, the, the spreadsheet I included in your, in your packet with the memo just showed theoretical because that three percent wage never, wage change never took place. But going back to 2013, which was the last year that we did across the board, three percent, 2014 budgets, when we started tying it to the CPIU, and those were the changes. Uh, the high, the highest was two point nine in 2019. So, you know, there was, there was some cost, theoretical cost savings to the city by attaching it to the CPIU.
Page thirty-nine.
I'm on page thirty-nine, last page.
Last page. So how, how do I rotate this thing, Christina?
Click, click view.
View.
Up on the top.
Rotate view and clockwise.
All right. Show me, Jack, where's the U?
Uh, top left corner.
View.
View, top left corner.
Oh, view. I thought, I don't have my hearing aids on.
Well, I've been working on this budget for twelve years, and so have a little bit of history on it. I, my concern is if we put the five point four into the base, um, our sales tax is really good right now, but we have seen some possible reasons for it being good, and once it's in the base, it's in the base forever. So my compromise position would be the three percent as the CPI in the base and the rest as a bonus, so that the employees do get that to offset costs, but not going forward. And I'm just trying to find a comp, compromise position because we have had that policy in the past, and I know Dave's gonna say that to me, but things change, too, you know? Just because it's been there in the past doesn't mean that it's always gonna stay there.
So, um, trying to follow along here, Barb. So if it goes into the, so this goes into the base, it's just not an annual deal? So if it was only one and a half percent, it would only go into the base as one and a half?
Yep.
And then it just multiplies year, like, in January, you had like a half a percent, right?
Yeah, for each January first, uh, there's a CPI, cost adjustment across the board into our, our salary scale. And that's the cost of living adjustment to the wage schedule. So if it's three percent, that would go onto the base. So everybody's salary goes up three percent January first.
With this last year, what's the gap quote? Was it just a half?
Point six.
Point six, yeah.
So the past practice, Brian, on the mid, middle part of this, in fourteen, you got a two percent, two one, two two, one oh, one six, two nine, one six, oh six. That, that's what the wage adjustment had been.
Correct.
Based on the CPI.
Correct, and I, I went back and zeroed it out, didn't include new hires, um, from 2013 on, so the staff level stayed the same.
Sure.
That's what I was comparing.
Okay.
So in 2018, total base salary was one point eight five. If we'd gone with the three percent, it would have been one point nine zero five.
Okay.
The actual was two percent, so it was one point eight eight seven. So it was about eighteen thousand dollars lower in 2014 by using the CPI than using the three percent.
So, so this is, to Jack's point, it's been quite low for the last seven years, and now it's five point four?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that's, uh, it's hard because can't have it both ways. We either, you know, you follow it or you don't follow it, is, is my understanding, and, and yet, yet, I think we still have to be diligent in looking at, you know, our sources of revenues are, and I don't even know all the sources, are, are, you're not, we could have another, you know, rest of the year of sales tax, and it could impact, I don't know how much, but.
Yeah, you know, our, our two major revenue sources are property taxes, which are, are handcuffed by the state, I shouldn't say handcuffed.
Yeah.
Restricted, um, with levy limits, and then sales tax, which is the most volatile of our revenue sources. You know, like this year, we've got a, a pretty decent year.
Yeah.
Growth-wise, no guarantees that that will continue. And again, you know, there's no, there's nothing saying that we'll res, you know, regress either.
So, but, excuse me, one question, Barb. I'm sort of intrigued by what you said. Are you suggesting that at least initially, we do a three percent wage increase with some type of a see how it goes bonus at the end?
No, I'm saying that we do the five point four percent to give them that number, but don't include the two point four in the base. That's just a bonus.
Okay.
Because I just don't want that rolling into the base.
I understand.
That's huge.
Yeah.
And it just multiplies, it's like a snowball rolling down a hill, it just picks up speed. So I'm saying give the five point four, but not as full base.
I got it. Now, one other question I have, there was a wage adjustment in March.
Right.
And what was that for, Brian? These guys are just nice guys, or?
Uh, it was primarily to bring the police department up to what was perceived to be market wages.
Okay. Was it just for the police?
Primarily, it was, it was an across-the-board.
Across-the-board.
Police got somewhere, two dollars and, and I'm rounding numbers, two fifty an hour, everybody else was about a quarter to maybe fifty cents.
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and look at the number.
But that was in 2021.
Correct.
So, I mean, at some point, whatever compensations you're getting for the year have to be included in this five point four percent, correct?
And additionally, the new pay scale that gave everybody a raise, be it small or large, also changed how their future step increases are. So every step increase will be larger than it had been on the prior scale, plus the change that occurred in March, plus the CPI. I guess I would be more in favor of a compromised CPI. I guess I would be more in favor of a compromised CPI because of those other factors, exactly what you're saying. And I'd really like for us to figure out a way to find that fifty thousand-ish to get rid of that four-year insurance buy-down. So we can be super marketable to new employees.
I think the whole, the biggest holdup for me in all of this is what, what the councils have done since fourteen is follow the CPI. It's worked probably to the advantage of the city. And now we have a five point four, and now it's hard for me to say, boy, we can't do that, we gotta, you know, and so, and I don't think any of us are saying that. But I think it's, I think we gotta be fair on, fair. And I, I'm not necessarily opposed to Barb's way of doing it, because I, I mean, trust me. I worked with salary adjustments in my career at Furniture Mart every year, and I hated it every year. And then I got over it by the end of the next month, and we were done. But, you know, I retired. But I, I also know this, that, that fair is fair, and.
When we give a one and a half percent raise. When we give a one and a half percent raise, and we tell the employees, well, that's, that's what the consumer price index says. No, sorry, but that's all you get. And then, you know, it's a couple of three percent the next year or two, and all of a sudden, it's a five percent one, and it's like, oh, sorry, that's too much money. I, I, I don't like that, and I kind of do like your idea Barb, about, you know, let's, let's give it as a bonus. I mean, after all, it's been a, we can call it a COVID bonus if we want, because we've had, you know, a lot of businesses and a lot of entities have said that. Because of the year that everyone went through, all the protocols you had to meet.
Yeah, I would probably stay away from bonus, I would use the word stipend of some type. And it just makes it cleaner. Bonus is, should be associated with a merit of some type.
I agree, I agree there, I mean, that's, bonus, I know what you're trying to say Barb, you know?
Yeah, I don't care.
They say, we receive those in Sioux Falls from time to time. And they would call it a lump sum payment that wouldn't affect the base. The problem with that, of course, is we've got this five point four. Now, I, I don't know about your history, if I remember back in history, I don't, I don't know if this has ever declined. So next year, if there's a four point nine CPI increase, so then you've got that, and we go with the three percent again. Do we then go, okay, one point nine plus the two point four that they didn't get this? So the lump sum payment would be somewhere around, you know, my math is correct, four point three. I, I mean, you're, you're gonna be just chasing the dog tail on this if, if you do it that way. I don't know if it's ever declined, not in my history has it ever, you know, has the CPI come in as a, as a negative number, has it? From time to time?
Yeah. I gotta be honest Dave, this is why, at my previous, we stayed at three percent. It made life a lot easier, we weren't, you know?
And we, and we did that for a while, so that in these cases, I, I know with Sioux Falls back in the eighties. There were times in just trying to, just trying to catch up with the inflation that was going on back then. They started throwing nine percent and twelve percent raises at us. In order to fulfill the contract and try to, try to keep people stable in their, in their, the purchasing power of their jobs. So the lump sum sounds, sounds good on, on the one side, but.
Can get messy.
You, you still start losing, losing ground as, as the workers on that. And then at some point, some future council has to bite the bullet and play catch-up.
Well, can we do the five point four percent and then look at saying, okay, capping at four percent? Or like you guys said, if you stopped at three? I mean, because they still get their raises, right, you still get a merit, so you would get this plus, I'm just thinking I shouldn't have been a teacher.
Mickey, the issue is.
I wanna work for Brian.
Going forward. Don't necessarily tie to the CPIU, don't, don't get yourself into that. I mean, you can recommend it, and it should be something as a guide, but not, I mean, in this particular case, I really believe that five point four. I don't see any way, other than you can't have it both ways, and I do believe we have to move forward with it. And, you know, I, I get Dave's point too, on the stipend might feel a little messy, you're ending up with the same amount. I do believe that a future council should have the ability to make a decision that it doesn't have to follow the CPI. I do, I don't, I mean, if they felt like it was one and they gave you three, I think the workers would feel like that was fair. If it's four and they gave you three, but the year before they gave you three when it was only two, I think there would be some fairness on both sides. In this particular case, if we don't follow, this is not fair to the employees.
I would agree, I mean, you can't have it both ways, you can't say, and, and I can make the argument, either way, of going a flat three percent across the board. I can make that argument, because we've done that in my company as well. And then we changed to the CPI, and it was all great when the CPI was dropping for the company. But then you get into a year like this year, and, oh, it's five point four. Oh wow, that's a lot, can we do that? That, I mean, you can't have it both ways, you gotta do one or the other, and, and quite frankly, you gotta stick to it. So, I would be in favor of just, you know, doing the five point four. Has anyone done the math on what the difference between five point four and three percent is?
About sixty thousand.
Well, that's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
My open.
So do we need to make a motion on something like this Brian, or is this an agreement that we've?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, the, the budget numbers are at the five point four.
So they're in the budget number?
They're in, they're in the budget.
I don't think we need to then at that.
No, if you wanted to change that to something more or less, then a motion.
Right.
It's in, it's in the budget at five point four.
What do we need to do, or can we have a discussion for a moment then about the health insurance buy-down? So I don't, where, where is the council at on getting rid of that? It's, in my opinion, really antiquated, and.
I think it's a great policy, to be very honest with you, because I don't see a lot of employee turnover in the city of Brandon. And I don't think that that was developed to do anything but that, would be my guess. And as a, as an example, when did, when did MintCo hit that water line, two summers ago?
Last spring, was it?
So I went to El Tapatio, and I was gonna have dinner with my family, and there's Donovan sitting in the middle of the street, turning a key to shut the water off. I walked over to see what he was doing, and he said, trying to keep the water tower from draining. I said, why, and he pointed, and there's water just rushing into the drainage ditch. Well, then I looked around, and there were probably another five public works guys turning keys on different parts of the streets. Well, if those people didn't know what they were doing, the whole town would have been out of water. The reason you do those types of programs is so that those people stay in their jobs. And you don't like it, that's fine, but it does what it does. And I think if I asked, to put him on the spot, but if I asked Andrew, I mean, did it matter? Like you stuck around to get the reward at the end?
Well, I'm still paying, I'm on the last year of paying by twenty-five percent. You will make a big difference going forward, I paid into it. Whereas if I started and I just got it right away, I guess I would still attach, and I spent a lot of money to get it now.
So it would encourage you to stay longer?
I think so.
Tim, I'm wondering though, I see your point, and, but at the same time, trying to be more proactive than reactive as we're going through. Isn't there a way where, I know everyone, all the employees pay five percent. Can't we grandfather those that have paid in, that it's always only gonna be five percent of their healthcare? But going forward, and I know that's one time we had this discussion, it's something that incentivized people to work for Brandon, is that we do have great benefits, right? What if we try to keep them low, so like maybe new employees only pay, they pay ten percent off the bat? But they're fluctuated to, you know, I guess that's at the mercy of another council, but like everyone that we have now that paid in, five percent's all you can pay. You know what I'm saying, can't we grandfather that? I don't know, I'm just trying to think of a way where Dana says if we can buy down, if we don't have to have that, maybe they pay ten percent of their premium, the new employees, I mean. But everyone that's already in it, just stay put, and it's grandfathered where the most you'd ever pay for healthcare is five percent of your premium. I, I don't know, I'm just looking for a compromise, because as we continue to grow, that is one way that helps offset costs with any business, right? Like if your insurance premiums go up, usually the employee takes it on, because you say, pay a certain percentage. But, I don't know, and there's just, I think there's other ways of doing it, and still maintain that loyalty, and still make sure that we have that in place for the people that have put in the years. I don't know.
A big part of it is the education. I mean, if, if they are understanding what that benefits, the salary percentages, and what that invisible paycheck is, I think they're gonna appreciate it right off the bat. I don't think that we have to make them pay in for, for three or, three or four years before they appreciate it. I mean, if, if it's in a, if it's a phenomenal benefit package, I think that in itself is going to be something that vests them and keeps them. Now, I'm not opposed to some sort of compromise, you know, where they're not having to pay seventy-five percent, maybe it's twenty percent the first year, or six months, or something. But I just, it's such a burden, I mean, we, we hire some of these people, you know, at forty thousand dollars. And I believe we figured out that the family premium minus the free single pay that they get is like fourteen thousand dollars a year. So, I mean, we've recently hired people at that, that wage bracket, and they're, they're not making forty thousand anymore. You know, they're making twenty-six thousand. So I just want us to be, have all the tools to be marketing the best people. No, we don't have problems finding people, that's great, but why don't we make sure that we find the absolute best people? And, you know, I mean, we, we just said sixty thousand is nothing, well, we're talking fifty grand to be able to get rid of this, this thing once and for all. And be more comparable with what other municipalities, other private sector jobs are doing. It's just, it's just unheard of to, to have to wait.
I guess my question would be, as far as the, you make some good points, don't, don't take this the wrong way. I don't know that that needs to be a part of this particular budget right now, though, isn't that when we get to the wage and benefit back, which we did in March, or, or not March, but in April or May? Wouldn't that be the appropriate time?
We have to budget for it now.
Yeah, what you, what you've got in the budget is anticipated insurance costs, including the employee buy-in. So Christina's figured it's about fifty thousand dollars, so if, if you wanted to get rid of that, so that all new employees would pay their five percent. Because when, when we do the budget, we typically anticipate new employees taking family coverage. When we do the budget, because we don't know what they're gonna take. So we would need to increase the insurance costs by fifty thousand, and then offset it.
And I would still propose that they have a probationary period before they're eligible, just, just like, I'm assuming is already in place. But not have to wait for that fourth year to have the same health insurance that their coworker has.
We put in for an increase for insurance, what percentage?
Okay, so if, if we went with something like that. Or say we went with a, instead of seventy-five, twenty, seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, if we went three years of twenty-five and then down to five. My question to you is then, can we just leave it at that? Or are we gonna come back every year and have to hash through the insurance and how much every employee is gonna have to pay? Like we have for the last three or four years? I mean, if it was a twenty-five, 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 and then it's five percent from then on, I, I could probably vote for that. But what I, what I do tire of is having this brought up every year, oh my, you know, the, the insurance rates are going up here, and we've gotta do something about it. And we need more buy-in from the employees. If you wanna, if you wanna do something like that, then, you know, make a commitment to say, yeah, and then we're gonna leave this alone and, and let it ride. Are you willing to do that?
Dave, we're talking two different topics, we're talking the employee buy-down, and you're talking insurance rates. If you're saying, are we just gonna blanket say, we're gonna pay whatever insurance is, no matter what it is, and not have a conversation? I mean, if it comes back next year and it's twenty-five percent increase, I think we're probably gonna talk about it. I, no, I can't make that promise, but I think, I see these as two very different topics. And having employees wait until a fourth year to be entitled to the same thing that their colleague is? When some of these employees, it is causing them an undue burden financially, to pay fourteen thousand dollars out of a wage that is not astronomically high? I think we need to change it, I think it's really antiquated.
For all those like Raleigh that's paid in, Chief, Andrew, almost there, right? I do feel like there has, if we go without the buy-in or whatever, if we lessen it, I still feel like we owe something to those that have. Brian, Christina, sorry, I forgot about you, I was looking that way, not this way. But I feel like you'd, can we just do something where, I feel like then we need something, so future councils, because you know, six more people are gonna be coming up here. That it's understanding that they can't go over five percent, because they have bought in. There's some, like Tim was talking about loyalty, right, like they've been with the city, I think there has to be something for them. Now, new, new hires, I think it's a little bit different if they haven't bought in for the four years, I don't, I don't know. Dave, you were part of this, I mean, what are you, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
First year is.
Seventy-five percent.
Is the employees.
Right. And then fifty, and then twenty-five, and then the fourth year, they're eligible for what?
For the five percent.
Yeah. And single is covered.
Yeah, single is covered.
Well, obviously, the first question is, I feel like we're getting good hires, so I don't think, I mean, are you having a hard time? You guys are the ones doing the hiring, Brian, Christina?
It kind of depends on the department, at least we have thirty-five apps, maybe some ones, parks, we just closed that app, I think we've got six. The opening of the Parks Department.
Right.
Last time we had opening of all the work, it was a couple of years ago, we had seven.
I, I have to agree with Dana, I do believe seventy-five is too high. I believe fifty is still too high, I think the term is too long. I would agree that we probably need to bring it down. And I would feel bad for anybody that had to go through and do the seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, but that's, you know, again, you just have to move on and, and make decisions based upon life today. And sorry, you guys that have all had, had some burden. But I do believe that for future hiring, I think this could get harder and harder down the road unless there's a change made.
So I'm curious, in the recent interviews that we've had, parks, police. How's the, the tone of the conversation go with these prospective new hires?
We haven't, we haven't done any interviews with parks yet, that'll be coming up Wednesday, I think.
Okay, so police department, how does that conversation, how's that go with, with these potential new hires?
I don't think it's fully understood, public hire.
Pardon me?
I don't think it's fully understood, public hire, to be honest, I mean, you can say things like that, you can say that we have a system, we have a rule of equal testing.
Right.
Until you come in, you see what you're gonna, you know, your possible, because they don't even know what they're talking about, public hire.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't, I don't know if the real estate will get it that way, because I don't think they really understand when you come in.
Well, I would agree with you a hundred percent, because I just know from my experience, that person is more worried about getting the job. You know, you can explain all the benefits to them, and they say, oh yeah, that, that sounds good, that sounds good, yes, sounds good. But they really don't know until they get hired and they start filling out paperwork, and then they're going, oh, I gotta pay that much.
Take-home pay is a lot different than twenty-five dollars an hour. So, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't think twenty-five percent at the first year is out of line. I think that's, is that what you are sort of proposing Dana? I, I think that's, is that what you are sort of proposing, Dana?
I, yeah, I'd be fine with that. I, I just, I think this waiting four years is, is just unheard of. Um, I, I do agree. I mean, it's, it's hard to find, it's harder and harder.
It's gonna get harder and harder, right?
And I think we want the best people. And to do that, I think we're gonna be much more advantageous to present our wonderful benefit package on the front end and not stay prepared for four years.
If we went to twenty-five percent, Christina, are you still estimating that would be somewhere in the fifty thousand dollar range? Cause you were basing that on ten percent.
I'm basing on that five percent.
Five percent. I just think seventy-five is way out of line.
Well, I would, I would make a proposal that we go with twenty-five for three years and the fourth year they get, they get five. And that way they've got the buy-in. They can, you can say that they have the buy-in to the program. They've got that, uh, uh, reward at the end of the three years and going into the fourth year. One of the problems when you do the grandfathering issues, then you start having two sets of employees. And, and, uh, I, I've seen that system with the pension program over in Sioux Falls. Uh, I had a much better pension plan than some of the people that were hired after, I don't know what year, I think it was.
A long time ago.
It was like nineteen eighty-seven, they, they, they changed the, uh, those people hired after eighty-seven were.
I wasn't there.
Yeah, thank you. And, and, and there was, there, there, there was some contention between those of us that had this better plan than the people that didn't have as good a plan. And, uh, you know, grandfathering does work. I mean, they, they're, they're working on it right now because you've got people that are under the Sioux Falls, uh, pension program. And then, and then I think it was in twenty thirteen, they switched to the state. And, uh, so it, it can, it can cause some issues. I'm, I'm not a real big fan of doing the grandfather here and go there, but that's me.
So I think at this point, Brian, Christina, we would propose to change to the twenty-five, 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 five.
Yeah. Can I, can I make a?
I did make a motion.
We're not done yet, but.
I did make that motion.
Yes.
I think we need a second probably to carry on.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve the reduction in the initial three-year, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five from the seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five. We do have a motion and a second for the discussion.
Do you guys have anything for this?
I, I, I agree that this is costly, but not everybody that you hired, at least not my department, took family insurance. So you're stepping on people that do take the family insurance. On the other side, speaking freely, being here in thirty-some years, I know why that seventy-five, fifty was put in place. It's nothing against the, with the police department themselves. It was put there for the police department who were hiring people and they were turning over constantly. Because we'd send them to peer, get them through their training. They'd come back here, work for three months and they put work for the sheriff's department. So that's what that was created for, to try and keep the retention as he said. Now, that's not saying it's just the police department because in my department, most of the people have been there for ten plus years. They've all had to go through that. I understand what you're saying about the forty thousand. But when you have people that have a forty-six cent an hour raise and by the time you took the fifty-eight cents an hour for the insurance, you lost twelve cents an hour. But yet we gave the police department, there again, nothing against them. We didn't bat an eye to eight thousand dollars when we gave them a two dollar and fifty cent an hour raise. One guy in my department got a twelve cent raise. So.
I would argue that maybe they're leaving shortly after they're through the academy because of wages and benefits. And they could go work for the county or Sioux Falls and not have to pay seventy-five percent. And wages, we've known have been a deficit for the police department for some time. So the wages would have been a lot higher too.
They were leaving for the programs. Programs implemented to stop that from happening.
Yes. Seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five.
I guess I don't understand that thought process. If you're trying to keep people, let's jack up the insurance to seventy-five percent. I thought this went back to the.
It's less you stay, if you get the loyalty.
I was under.
You wanna stay and have that insurance or do you wanna just say, I go, I'll go make more money and I can pay my own insurance?
Didn't this go back to the, I thought we determined at one point this went back to the seventies? Is that this, this program?
No.
I thought that's what Brian, Brian said.
It came out where I was starting.
It was in the eighties.
Eighties?
It was late forties.
In fairness, I can, I can tell everybody that during the time that I was there, though we did have some turnover, I didn't lose anybody because of insurance. Probably wages, there were a couple. One went to the sheriff's office and one went to the highway patrol. The guy that went to the highway patrol always wanted to be a, be a trooper. And, uh, the one that went to the sheriff's office had his three years in, um, which is something that I always asked for. And he went to the sheriff's office for opportunity. And, uh, so I never lost anybody because of the seventy-five, twenty, fifty, twenty-five. But be that as it may.
So I guess I'd like to bring up one more thing when we talked about insurance. And as we discussed this a little bit in the past, of, of the requirement, let's say, where if a spouse has their insurance or insurance available to them, that they must take it. And did we ever get anything back from Casey? Did you ever talk to Casey, Brian?
No, but I, I talked to, I sent a survey to staff. Once again, I didn't include, I didn't bring it with me. For those folks that have spouses, it's about fifty-fifty as their spouses are, are eligible. And I think if memory serves me right, the cost for their spouse to obtain coverage at their workplace is about four hundred and fifty, four hundred and sixty bucks a month. From the information I was given.
Well, I guess the way I look. The way I look at it is, um, a family is gonna look at, okay, if it's gonna cost me four fifty on my, on the spouse's plan and it's costing me three fifty over here on the city plan, you're gonna go with the three fifty. Now, on the other hand, there's plenty of companies out there that are, their insurance rates are gonna be cheaper than what we would say. So maybe that same family could get coverage at two fifty a month as opposed to our three fifty. And it's not, in my opinion, it's not hurting our employees at all. In, in fifty-fifty of the cases, they're gonna be right where they're at right now. And then twenty-five percent are gonna be lower. Well, actually, only twenty-five percent, let's say of the fifty-fifty would be lower. So in, in, in a way, we're probably saving money for the families by implementing the policy. We're not costing them anything.
So they forget, I think we have time to talk about another topic. Can we vote on?
Yeah, we do have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion.
We do have a motion and a second. Are there any, any other questions? I, I hear what you're saying, Jack.
Well, I'm wondering if this should be incorporated into the, to the motion. Is, is my.
I'd rather it be a different motion. I'd rather talk about the buy-down first. Kind of your question, Dave, the, with the, cause I, I'm the one that kind of figures what their seventy-five, twenty, fifty, twenty-five with, with a cost of insurance that's increasing, that has increased dramatically. And we've kind of talked about that before. And really the question is just what do you want for the, the percentage, you know? Forty, thirty, twenty, ten, five, you know, or if you go to twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five. So it's been talked about. It's just, we just need to get direction on what you guys want for that percentage to be, so.
I just clarify what we're voting on is the twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five on family, right?
Well, on.
It would be anything over single.
Anything over employees. And then the fourth year will be five.
So, okay, so let's say we vote for it, then you would bring us back the numbers. And then if they're like crazy high, we can change it or are we stuck with this?
Well, you can, you can, what we're hoping tonight is to get final direction on some of these issues that are outstanding. We will bring that back to you at the budget work session next Monday.
Thanks, Brian. Next Monday.
And then if, if you didn't, if you didn't like it, you'd, you'd make a motion to amend it again. You know, looking at it just real rough, if we, if we took out, if we, if we did it at twenty-five, 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 now we're making an assumption that all of the employees that would be eligible would be taking family coverage.
Not all would do.
We don't, yeah, we don't. We haven't, we haven't even talked to them yet. Worst case, it would be about thirty-six grand roughly.
Okay.
Okay, I think, I think we've, are ready to call a question. We have a motion to change to twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five and then the five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So let me just ask a quick question. So. Andrew, are you in your third year, fourth?
I'm on year three right now.
On year three? And you're paying?
I have, I have child, so to the point of the spouse, so my, we have, my wife's got new jobs and she can get her insurance so we can take her off that plan.
Okay.
So that's paying seventy-five and fifty percent of that. So now she's covered, so I've traveled and I pay twenty-five percent.
Okay, so it doesn't affect you positively or negatively?
As far as.
The amount, the rate?
If, if it changes, I'm twenty-five, 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 I'm the same. It doesn't change anything.
And you, and this fourth year will.
I take that on that, I think it's March. I started full-time March of eighteen.
Currently, we have, currently, we have. One employee is over the twenty-five percent, so it'll affect them in any future.
I'm not, yeah.
Is Andrew only one though that's, where he's at?
No, there's, uh, three, three eighty that are at twenty-five percent.
Okay, are there other items, Brian? Or I know those are the two main.
Those, those were the big, the big things. Um, you know, we can go into the budget and make some tweaks to balance it out after we figure out how much the insurance, extra we're gonna have to be insurance.
Okay.
We can, we can look at some numbers to balance that out so we have a balanced budget.
Good.
So, um, based on the proposed staffing that came forward, I'm not in favor of that. Um, but it sounds like the rest of the council is, so, uh, I, I don't agree with that. But, um, just so you know, I will be voting against this budget proposal.
Are we doing all four new people?
Three.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now included in the budget is two new staff people, one in the sewer department, one in finance.
And then engineering possibly, and then we still have a.
Yeah, the, yeah, the engineering isn't in the, this is not in the budget.
Well, but economic developer.
And the developer, we're, that should, that, that should be done this year.
That's what we're budgeting, okay, that's the answer.
So at this point, it's one finance and one.
Sewer. Public Works, Public Works.
So here, I don't know how, but I can raise the council, so they, they're.
So one, one finance, one public works and then potentially one, um, economic and, and one.
Well, the economic, the development director's in this year's budget, so.
Unless you give them direction, they will not put the engineering position in the budget. That's not how it came forward. So unless we tell them to put it in, it's not gonna be in.
I'm in favor of it being put in.
So I spent a good portion of an afternoon with Dennis Olson. He was just giving me a nice little tour out at, um, the rail park, of course. And, uh, this topic came up. And I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but I got the impression that he felt that a development director slash, uh, person in the engineering department could be one of the same. That they could help out Tammy on some of the engineering stuff.
Dennis is wrong. The development director's position is for economic development and planning and zoning, not engineering. You're not gonna get.
Well, planning, that, that, I think that was his point?
Yeah.
On the planning and zoning side of things?
Yes, that's, that's.
Which would take off some of the burden of Tammy. I think that was his point.
Yep. Yeah, it won't do, the, the person won't do any engineering per se.
No, no. I, I may have misspoke.
Yeah, a little bit.
More on the planning and zoning side.
Correct.
So if that was the case, then I, then I kind of get the, Tammy would get some help and we'd still get our economic, uh, development director. That means, you know, Dana, I don't know, he's, he's not even a half-time employee at this point, I believe.
Correct.
Like a corner, maybe, if that.
Depends on, depends on the week, day, month, depending on.
Right.
How many people are calling up saying, hey, I wanna, I wanna come to Brandon.
Right. So I don't know what that title would be.
Development director.
Just economic development director? What part of his duties would be to help on planning and zoning?
Yeah, it'd be split. Um, I don't wanna call it economic development director because that leads everybody to believe this. The person's just gonna do industrial development, which isn't the case.
Right, and that's, that's my point. I don't know what that title would be.
Development director would be the title.
Oh, take the economic out of it.
Yep, and they would do both P and Z and economic development, work with the, uh, development foundation.
But we added that position this year, so it's already in the budget. It's not a new position. It's already built in. So the only positions that are being added are the sanitation and the finance. So two people, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so finance, we'll have two and a half people up there or two full-time, one part-time? Is that right? With the new position?
Well, we'd be looking at Christina, the finance officer, full-time. Um, Doris, the utility billing, full-time. A full-time assistant finance officer and then Karen as a part-time office person.
So that'd be.
Could we not?
You wanna have?
Could we not have somebody that helps out Tammy and helps out in the office?
Yeah, Karen, Karen could do.
She can do AutoCAD and stuff?
Yeah, not AutoCAD, but could certainly help with filing and, and routine stuff. You know, when I, when I came ten years ago, we had five people in the office. We currently have three and a half.
There are some duties that can be shifted around. She's talked about Melissa taking on that AutoCAD too. So I believe there are some duties there that can be shifted and delegated to others.
AutoCAD, that's not a, that's not a simple program. So who would be, who's qualified to take that on?
We could look at Melissa, our zoning administrative assistant.
Well, my experience, it's a pretty complicated program. It's usually taught in school.
Yep.
That's not saying we couldn't, uh, send someone to schooling for it?
We could, we could contract it out as well on a short-term basis.
And Karen doesn't wanna go full-time? I mean.
She, she's not able to.
She's not able to.
This is a family.
But we're not supposed to, but we're not supposed to look.
At positions. We're supposed, we're not supposed to look at people. We're supposed to look at positions. And I feel like we've had a double standard on that with Karen and Ryan. And I think that's really unfortunate.
I agree a hundred percent. I think that we just added a half-time person, I believe it was stated in two thousand and nineteen. And now also we're adding another full-time person on top of the halftime. I'd rather see us go from halftime to full-time rather than leapfrog. And, you know, I, I remember Barb asking a couple of meetings ago, what's not being done? Where's the shortage? And I guess I haven't heard a response to that, to justify an additional full-time staff on top of the halftime that we added two years ago. I, I did hear Tammy state lots of things that she needs help with and ways that she could keep Ryan or somebody busy throughout the winter. keep Ryan or somebody busy throughout the winter, and I see her as, as being somebody we're going to burn out very quickly if we don't get her help. So I'm still very much in favor of her having help and it being added to this budget, so I don't know if we need to have a motion on that or a vote.
Well, I kind of, I kind of look, my position hasn't changed. I don't think we need additional help for GIS at this point in time. I look at the positions as wants and needs. We need to keep our finances in order. When I came, we were seven years behind on audits, which is quite frankly unheard of. We need to keep processing payments, we need to keep track of money. We want, and I want, a fully integrated GIS system, but it's not a need, is the way I look at it.
Yeah, I wanted one for years of my company.
I would, that's, that's my goal, is, is to get a fully integrated one, so that we can pull up any property in town and get a list of, you name it, utilities, building permits, et cetera.
Hey, Brian, I went through the same thing, we wanted, we looked at costs, we had all kinds of proposals over four or five years, and lo and behold, the state DOT said, you know, we're going to hire an intern and we're going to see if we can, can do this statewide. And they did it, it's not complete. Anything going on at the state level for anything like this?
Haven't heard anything, but they're, they're, we're not hearing much from the state on, about any...
Yeah, I hear you, but...
Other than pot and art funding, which they're finally getting together. So, yeah, we're not hearing anything coming out of the state.
Might be worth a question, that is all I'm saying.
I, I do have one question, Brian. Again, not knowing all the processes, when do your departments make their request as to what additional staff they might need? Was this something that happened back in March, April, May?
No, we handed out the, the budget request forms in May this year, a month earlier than normal.
Okay.
So department heads develop their budget, and then we go through them to make sure we understand what they're asking for, but each department head develops their own budget.
And was, in May, did Tammy make a request for additional staff?
No.
That's where I have a little bit of a problem. I think some of this, and I don't disagree, she's got a lot of stuff going on, I see her getting pulled in different directions, but I have a hard time when the person in charge of the department doesn't make a request.
Well, I'm thinking, did she think that Ryan was going to be able to stay because he was on the part-time budget? I don't know.
And that's my only point, Barb, I, I just struggle sometimes with somebody not making a request and then getting into the budget hearing and thinking, wow, yeah, I do have a, you know, and I agree with you two both that you, you, she, she does a lot. I sometimes worry, maybe we're trying to do too many projects, but yet we get a lot of requests.
I was under the impression that she had requested it, so I apologize for that. Christina, this would have been really helpful a little earlier.
Yeah.
No, it was presented back in February too.
Not in this format. You've got to remember, I'm old, my memory does not hold all this stuff, guys.
Well, let's have you redo the budget, Brian, with the tweaks that we've made, changes we've made tonight, and then next Monday, we will kind of review it and hopefully be at that point where we might be able to...
Yeah, unless there's any more, any other changes you want to see.
I just have a question. Raleigh, you're, I know you have quite a few guys that are going to be retiring, like when's the soonest that, not saying they will, but they could. Like how many years? Like, are we talking five years or less than five?
There's four of them that could go with five years.
Okay, so within?
Which are all department head.
Guys, yeah.
Me, Donovan, and Larry, lead operator, so they have no, no department.
Yeah, okay, that's why I'm just, that's why I was thinking that it's, there's quite a few of you in less than five years, right, that could. Not saying you would, right, Raleigh? But you could.
I don't know, it's going to depend on you people.
Okay, he said 5.4%.
There you go, that's a good point.
So, so Raleigh, that include yourself, by the way?
Yes, I could retire already.
Okay, so...
You love us, Raleigh.
When, to me... To me, the course of action that you and your department need to take is succession planning. You know, who's going to take over for you when you retire? Who's going to take over for the next guy as he retires? I would hope that you're already doing that, and it sounds like most of the guys are cross-trained and would be able to ascend to the next level. So personally, I just don't, as long as you're doing that succession planning, I don't see a need to bring in someone here on the, on the lower end of things to do more succession planning. Follow my drift there?
Somewhat, but I'm also trying to hire some more people to do some of the work that we can need to get done, so it's not looking necessarily to hire a department head. We kind of have that progression already there. Doesn't mean like, like she stated, that every one of the department heads can go on in five years, it's just that they could work in five years. But I need to hire more employees to get some of the work done that we need to get done on a year basis.
So if you're, if you're in need of another labor person, okay, so be it. But another, another one going into the management, ascension?
Or a new guy to come in at the bottom floor, so he can start with the next three, five.
So the other one can move up to manage that much?
Age proposing.
That's what you said, a good one to start here.
Wait.
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a labor or a maintenance worker in public works.
No, I totally get that, I just wanted to make sure, yeah, that's a need, so then those guys that you do kind of think could go up to management, they can, you have other guys all trained to take over.
Okay, you guys know what you need to do, and look forward to looking at it again this week.
One, before you do that, one quick comment or question for the development director, we talked about the planning and zoning, is that going to be in the job description?
Oh, yeah. Right now, it's about a four and a half to five-page job description, I'd like to cut it down a little bit.
To a couple pages?
Yeah. It might just be as, as, and duties as may be assigned, that might be the catch-all.
That's always the last line of the job description.
Good, good job description.
Okay, motion to the second?
Have a motion, the second, to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all.